Madam Speaker, they're still passing out my amendments, so in the interest of time, I'll ask if you can recognize Senator Yamashita, and then I will come back to my amendment.
Oh, okay, sure. Senator Yamashita, I understand you have an amendment?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the amendment should be on everyone's desk, and this should address the concern of the particular lot that was being identified. And so, on page 2, line 14, after trustees, no, wait, I'm so sorry, as identified by the Chamorro Land Trust Board of Trustees, or, I suppose it'd be Commission, I suppose, the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, and then the amendment reads, "Except that the selected lot shall not include Lot Number 5173-1 and so forth, Municipality of Tamuun in Guam, containing an area 4,129 square meters, more or less, as marked and designated on Department of Land Management, drawing number 14-013-T722, LM checked, number 076-FY213, dated May 213, filed with Department of Land Management, under document number 851244." The speculation was, was that there was a strategy, it was going to be a trick, that we're just going to go back to that. And what we're hoping is that this will address that particular concern, that there's no way that that could be, that the lot on the cliff, on the roadway there, can be used for foster care.
On the amendment, hearing objections? So ordered. Do you have any other amendments, Senator? Okay. So Senator Respeja, then, for your amendment?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I do have my amendment, and copies have been made and passed out, and it's in keeping in the spirit of the author of the bill's intent, with respect to identifying a suitable lot and engaging both the legislature and the administration every step of the way. So I offer, as, after the word trustees, to add the following sentence, "The Chamorro Land Trust Commission shall transmit to the Speaker of Illesa Tura in Guam its selection of a suitable lot at least 91 days prior to effectuating the exchange. Illesa Tura may reject said selection within 90 days, or it shall be deemed approved. In the event of rejection by Illesa Tura, the Guam, the Chamorro Land Trust Commission may submit a different selection, subject to legislative rejection pursuant to this process," so that the process repeats itself until a site can be, can be approved, or rejected, or approved by default through the legislature.
On the amendment? Senators, no, I, I'm recognizing Senator S. Nicholas, and then I'll have you, Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a question, and this always comes up whenever I have some, these kind of like, this kind of language to deal with. When we say Illesa Tura may reject said selection within 90 days, what, what official action are we expecting? Are we to pass a resolution rejecting the measure? Is it a bill? Exactly what would satisfy the rejection? As, I guess, as a point of inquiry.
Senator, do you, you to the question?
Yeah, I appreciate that question, because it's something that the legislature has been going through for the last several terms, and I think what we've been doing in order to meet this requirement is that if, if, when the Chamorro Land Trust Commission submits to you its selection of a suitable lot, and if any senator of the 33rd Guam Legislature doesn't agree that that lot is suitable, then they would have to introduce a bill, and then the, then they would have to get that bill rejected by the legislature. Or if they, or like we do with rules and regs, if, if the Oversight Chair or a member agrees with those rules and regs, then a bill would be introduced to approve it. We've also done certain things where we simply introduce a resolution expressing the intent of the legislature to disapprove these actions, and in some cases, those actions have been accepted. I even have one case where it just took me writing to the Director of Agriculture, saying that the rules and regs they submitted were deficient, and so the Department of Agriculture agreed, and those rules and regs didn't lapse into law until they met those requirements, and they resubmitted, and then the 90 days continued. So this leaves for a really good question that, in most cases, have been answered by the legislature, and it has yet to be challenged by the administration or through the courts.
Senator, are you satisfied with the answer? Senator S. Nicholas?
I, to, to a point, I probably would like to clarify, only because I do recall back when we were discussing the Competitive Wage Act in the earlier part of this year, part of the language that was written into the, the statute that enabled the Competitive Wage Act to be transmitted, the way it was back in, in late January, was it must be transmitted by a certain date, and the legislature must act by a certain date. And so, it became a, a topic of discussion amongst our colleagues. Okay, if we pass a bill, even if it gets vetoed, or it doesn't get enacted into law, does that constitute action, and so therefore, did we fulfill our obligations based on what it is that we, we put together in, in the law at the time? So I think maybe, maybe we should just specify exactly what action will be suitable, and so I, I would like to propose an amendment to the amendment, so that it may say, after the word reject, there on the second sentence, "Illesa Tura may reject, through a legislative resolution, said selection within 90 days, or it shall be deemed approved." Through a legislative resolution passed by the body. Through the adoption of a legislative resolution. Through the adoption of, of a legislative resolution.
So it's just going to be through the adoption of a legislative resolution, right? And that will be, Illesa Tura may reject through the adoption of a legislative resolution. And you had something else, then you have to finish that sentence, though.
Said selection within 90 days, or it shall be deemed approved.
Illesa Tura may reject through the adoption of a legislative resolution, then continue on said selection.
Perhaps a comma also after 90 days?
Yeah, because that doesn't sound right there.
So, Illesa Tura may reject through a legislative resolution, through the adoption of a legislative resolution, said selection within 90 days, comma, or shall be deemed approved.
Okay, so that's the amendment, can, yeah, I just want to make sure, looking at legal counsel, to make sure then that the language would be appropriate. So, on the amendment, to the amendment, Senator Ada, you had asked to, Senator Tom Ada? And, by the way, we'll make the change there as well, that after the word trustees, that it is Commission, based on the previous amendment that passed.
Well, I was going to say that actually, the, the, this amendment, I guess, you know, addresses one of the issues, but it, it still does not go to a even more fundamental issue in that particular section of the law, because, again, we're still using, we haven't addressed it, in Lot Number 3470, that's, that's an area, that's an area that contains, piece of property, tract of land that contains 117 acres. Out of that 117 acres, we have already disposed and transferred over to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission 26 acres, okay? The remaining property is property that was reserved by the Department of Education for middle school, 35 acres, the Guam Memorial Hospital, for an acute care hospital, Department of Mental Health, 5 acres for an adult residential treatment facility, another 10 acres for a children's residential treatment facility, 2 acres for a crisis center, and then, remaining is 4 acres for a public health facility. So, you know, we may be doing all this, Chamorro Land Trust Commission, but, but nowhere do I see that in that process, we're going to involve the other stakeholders as to determine whether they don't need their property anymore, because somebody's property here, somebody's reservation, is going to be set aside. So I think in that, you know, considering that...
Senator, if I may, I know we're dealing, first of all, with the amendment, and which is being proffered by Senator Respeja, who talks about the selection or rejection of it, but, and what you're talking about, basically, is 3470. I recognize you for that, to continue your discussion, but, just specific to the process, do you have any comments on the process itself?
Of, as, as...
As amended?
As articulated in the amendment?
Yes.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
The amendment, as amended?
Yes, the amendment, you're right, to the amendment. So are there any, anybody else who would like to speak on the amendment? This Nicholas amendment to the Respeja amendment? There being none, so you want us to continue to address it, Senator? You recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just in consultation with the profferer of the actual amendment we are amending, he's asking if we can actually adjust the language for the amendment, to the amendment?
Okay, which is?
So, to have it read, after the word reject, "Or accept by resolution of the legislature."
Or accept through a...
By resolution of the legislature.
Or by, okay, by a resolution, or legislative resolution, or by, which one is it?
By resolution of the legislature.
Of the legislature, okay, because I have to, all right, so let me, Illesa Tura may reject or accept by a resolution of the legislature, then set selection, no, continue, set selection within 90 days. Is that correct, then, Senator?
Correct, yes, Madam Speaker.
So, the new amendment now, as worded, and it says, Illesa Tura may reject or accept by a resolution of the legislature, and then continue on set selection within 90 days. Any objection to the amendment? There being none, so ordered. And then now, on the amendment that has been amended, the Respeja amendment, Senator, you still want to speak on that? Okay, so on the amendment that has been amended, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senators. And Senator Ada, specific to, you said you wanted to then continue your discussion on the land itself.
Yes, Madam Speaker. You know, we still need to address the, the issue of that, that tract of land that is being used for, for an exchange, to be given to the Chamorro Land Trust, in exchange for other Chamorro Land Trust property that is to be now used for other purposes. And, and so, it just leaves the question of, in that Lot 3470, reservations were made back in Public Law 2298, whatever it was, reservations of about 90, 90-some acres was, was already reserved for Department of Education, GMH, Department of Mental Health, and there's still 4 acres left for Department of Public, for the Department of Public Health. And so, now we're going to run in, so I guess we're just going to arbitrarily go in there and take away the lands that was reserved for them. And there's nothing in, in the bill that says, that, you know, there's, there's, these people have to be brought in, and either say, "No, I don't need the 35 acres anymore for an acute care hospital," and so then, that becomes available, that frees up 35 acres of property in this unsurveyed tract of land. So that could be done in the gullies, for all that matter. But my only point is that, all that property that's in there right now is already reserved for other agencies. And so, there's no mention in here about getting them involved, and how do we then address their reservations? I don't have any amending language, I'm just pointing out the deficiency, somebody's got to fix it.
Is there anyone who would like to speak on the main motion? Senator S. Nicholas?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I guess it's a point of inquiry, or, I'm not quite sure, but, we've been talking a lot about a foster home, and all that stuff, but there's nothing in this bill that mentions the building of a foster home. It does mention that we're swapping land with the Department of Public Health for another location to be identified, but it, there's nothing in the bill that actually specifies what that land is to be used for. So unless, is there some kind of MOU that's supposed to be referenced, or is there some kind of pre-existing law that's supposed to be referenced to, to basically earmark what this property is to be used for, or should it be written into the bill? Because right now, the only thing the bill says is, "We're authorizing Public Health to exchange Lot Number 3470 with the Chamorro Land Trust," and that's it. So I'm, what are we exchanging the property for? What are we compelling that exchanged property to be used for? Should we, should we be referencing another existing public law to make sure all of those things take effect?
Madam Speaker?
You would like to yield to that, to that question?
Yes, it's noted in Public Law 22, 22-118, if I'm not mistaken, 22-18.
I just...
22, 22-18 has all the breakdowns, several pages of all the breakdowns of where that Chamorro, where that raw land was going to go to. There's, yes, the whole Ascenan.
Yes.
Yeah.
You're right, but, but no, but that's, but that's not...
So, it's only, it was only Department of Public Health's request that the property that was, was given to them, that they would utilize, that they would exchange that property for two different parcels. And we did the first parcel, and now we're doing, we're closing this parcel. So, yes, there, there is, but I have no objections if an amendment's put into, to, to include what it's for. We tried to do it on an earlier amendment, and it, and it failed.
Senator S. Nicholas, you still on the floor?
Well, I mean, Madam Speaker, basically, what, like I said, what the bill's doing, I understand that we've, the Ascenan, the utilization of Ascenan is earmarked. What we're saying in this bill is, we're authorizing the swap of the Ascenan property for other properties, but what are we, what are we effectuating that swap for? Are we swapping Ascenan for another lot to build a foster home? Are we swapping Ascenan for another lot to build a veterans hospital? You know, are we swapping Ascenan for another lot to, I mean, we're not, we don't, anywhere in the bill identify what we're swapping the properties for. And so, I'm uncomfortable authorizing a property swap without fully understanding or, or mandating what that swap is supposed to accomplish. Right now, the bill just says, "We're authorizing a land exchange, the property to be exchanged is this, for a property as yet to be identified." We're waiving the appraisal requirement for those properties, but we're nowhere in this bill identifying what the swap is for, and what we're, what that, what that property once acquired by Public Health is to be used for. And I think that that's very, very important. Otherwise, we're pretty much authorizing a swap for almost any purpose. Public Health can basically swap the Ascenan property for any other property, and then MOU it to any other entity that's going to use it for whatever other purpose. So, I, I, I'm really hesitant in moving the entire bill forward on those, on those grounds, unless we specifically identify what the, the newly acquired property by virtue of this exchange is going to be used for. I'd like to request a reset, a brief recess, Madam Speaker.
Okay, take a brief recess.
Thank you.[1183.73]
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm going to proffer this amendment and I'm hoping my colleagues can chime in in the event that they feel that it's not properly placed, but I think it is. This will be on page two. Section two, land exchange authorized. Before the word notwithstanding include new language that says, "For the purposes of constructing a foster care facility," comma.
For the purposes of constructing a foster care facility, comma.
And then the rest of the language remains.
So, for the purposes of constructing a foster care facility, comma, notwithstanding any other provision of the law, and in consideration of the highest and best use. That's amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? For the purposes of constructing a foster care facility and notwithstanding...
And notwithstanding any other provision of law, and then strike the "and" after that, comma. So, for the purposes of constructing a foster care facility and notwithstanding any other provision of law, comma, in consideration of the highest and best use of the properties in question, comma.
On the amendment, Senator S- Senator Ada.
Well, I guess that, you know, that amendment that's being proposed is fine. The only problem that I have with it is that on that line three there where it reads, "And in consideration of the highest and best use of the properties in question," how can we determine, how can that be determined if we're waiving the appraisal requirement that's shown in section three? So, you know, that's kind of...
Then you delete the waiver.
The what?
Then you delete the waiver. You got one of the, one of the other has to happen.
I'm gonna move.
You can't have, you can't have two conflicting language.
Yes, and I'm gonna move that when we dispose of this amendment, if that's gonna stay, I'm also gonna move then that we delete section three.
On the S. Nicholas amendment, which is on line, page two, line two, after authorized, "For the purposes of constructing a foster care facility and notwithstanding any other provisions of the law, in consideration of the highest and best use of properties in question." Is that correct, Sandra? It just doesn't sound right when you hear it, huh?
Well, there's just one thing that concerns me, and that is that, you know, when we say, "For the purposes of constructing a foster care facility and notwithstanding any other provision of law," are we basically saying you can build the facility, you don't need to go through the procurement process, you don't need to go through any other provision of law that would govern how this facility is built? And that's kind of why I'm bringing it up to the body.
You're right. It does not, it doesn't, it's, you're right.
So, how about we just...
You can't, you can't say that you're gonna do this and then notwithstanding...
So, can we, and again, I'm gonna put this out there for dialogue, can we just say, "For the purposes of constructing a foster care facility," comma, and then strike out the notwithstanding any other provision of law? Because basically, this is an act to authorize this exchange. I don't understand why we need to have an notwithstanding provision there anyway.
You know, guys, we're gonna take a recess. The legislature's back in session. Senator S. Nicholas, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In further analysis, I've determined that the placement of the language I'm proposing for the amendment is not properly placed, so I would like to withdraw my amendment and be afforded the opportunity to reissue it.
No objections? So, order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, what we'll do is, after the word authorized on line four on page two, Imaga La Hingwahan is hereby authorized, comma, "For the purposes of constructing a foster care facility," comma.
Wait, Imaga La Hingwahan?
Is hereby authorized. This is on page two, line four. Imaga La Hingwahan is hereby authorized, comma...
Comma.
"For the purposes of constructing a foster care facility," comma.
Purposes of, oh, so use that language there.
That's right.
Okay, so the same language, but to, all right, so Imaga La Hingwahan is hereby authorized, "For the purposes of constructing a foster care facility and..."
No, no "and."
No "and"?
"To exchange the real property."
To exchange the real property, okay. On that amendment, any discussion? Senator Ada, you recognize.
I don't know whether it's appropriate to, I would like to make an amendment to that amendment, so that it reads further that on line four, it reads, "Imaga La Hingwahan is hereby authorized, comma, for the purpose of constructing a foster care facility," comma, "to exchange on a value-for-value basis," comma.
Okay, so I, you were only allowed, you're right, to, but, but that's a little bit different because you're not necessarily amending this.
Okay, fine.
So, we'll let his amendment go first and then I'll recognize you on an amendment. So, on the S. Nicholas amendment, which is to read on line four, page two, Imaga La Hingwahan is hereby authorized, "For the purposes of constructing a foster care facility, to exchange the real property and so on." Any objection? No objections? So, order. Senator Ada, then you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, I'd like to proffer the amendment on page two, line four, such that it reads then, "Authorized to exchange," comma, "on a value-for-value basis," comma, "the real property reserved for the government of Guam." Because if we say, "For the Department of Public Health and Social Services," there's only four acres left, four acres of property that was originally reserved that be left available, and if we're gonna do on a value-for-value basis, then, you know, one acre in Tamuning or wherever, a, an equitable exchange may be ten acres in Asinen or whatever, but maybe instead of limiting it to the Department of Public Health land reservation, let, let the administration decide which of the properties reserved for government of Guam may be available for an exchange, which is gonna then require getting with each of the agencies and, and checking to see if, if they're still, you know, in need of the property that was reserved, what, 20, 30 years ago? So, that's, that's my amendment.
So, the amendment then is after...
The word exchange.
Exchange at the words, "On a value-for-value basis," comma, and then, of course, the other...
And then it will continue to read, "The real property reserved for the government of Guam," and then we delete lines seven through, deletes lines seven through 12.
Okay. Does everybody understand the amendment?
Yes, yes, okay.
Okay. But, but now, in order to make that amendment work, section three then is going to have to be deleted, otherwise there'll be that inconsistency.
So, on the amendment, and there is an objection. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Senator S. Nicholas on the amendment.
So, I guess a question for the mover of the amendment. Just to clarify then, what we've originally been talking about throughout the discussion of this bill is exchanging Asinen, but now with this amendment, we're gonna be able to exchange any government property for any Chamorro Land Trust inventory for the purposes of building a foster care facility.
Senator?
But exchange on the value-for-value basis, not area-for-area.
So, Senator, are you able to answer your question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker.
So, on the Ada amendment, there is an objection, so in favor of...
And so, I would ask then, Madam Speaker, I, I understand there was an objection. I, whoever, you know, objected, I certainly would like to understand the basis for the objection if that individual yield.
She will not yield to the question.
The individual will not yield to the question of why the objection for a exchange on a value-for-value. Okay, thank you.
Are you yielding to the question?
I'll yield to that, and my only answer to that was, this property being exchanged is from government to government to work within, and again, we'll note for the foster home for our foster children, so I object.
That doesn't make sense. It was government to government. Senator Ada.
Well, thank you. I, I appreciate that yield, but while the exchange is within the government itself, the fact of the matter is that we are shortchanging one group, the Chamoros on our island, from properties that have reserved, been reserved for them in the Chamorro Land Trust inventory to benefit another group, and so that's not fair. Thank you very much.
Point of information, Madam Speaker. That property that was used, that was reserved for the government of Guam from this body was for the Department of Public Health, who initiated with the other stakeholders the need to build the foster care facility and said would offer this property for, to be able to build on this other property. So, I just want to note that for the record.
I think the senator did do that when he read the portions, the partials in 2018. So, since there is an objection, then, others in favor of the Ada amendment, please raise your hand. Amendment failed, receiving three votes. Senator S. Nicholas.
Point of inquiry, Madam Speaker. So, now that we've clarified that the purpose of this land exchange is to build a foster care facility, what statute do we have on the books currently to authorize the, the actual construction of such a facility? Is that already, is that already statutorily authorized, or are we basically saying we're gonna exchange the land for this purpose, but we haven't authorized the, the construction of that facility yet?
And who would you like to answer your question?
I guess to, to the author of the, of the legislation.
Would the author yield to the question?
Madam Speaker, just note that based upon law 22...
Is your mic on?
Public law 2218, yes, Madam Speaker, my mic is on. That, that, the authorization to build is with, already within the public law 22-18, and the reservations are, the only difference that we're doing is taking one land and exchanging with the other. The authorization and the use of the, of the portions of the lands that were reserved back in, the 22nd Guam Legislature gave the authorization to build these specific facilities.
I don't think so. It's only, it's only a set of site lands, not authorization to build. Senator S. Nicholas.
So, I just need to clarify, Madam Speaker. With this bill, and perhaps you can, you can guide me here, with this bill, we're just basically saying, you're gonna swap these two pieces of land, one is a Asinen, the other one is yet to be identified, and when that swap is complete, it will be for the purposes of constructing a foster care facility, but we are not pre-authorizing that to happen. We're just basically saying, when that swap happens, that's the only thing that the land can be used for, but it cannot start yet until the legislature authorizes it to start?
My understanding is that any authorization, I mean, to build, you're gonna have to get an appropriation of money to build. No, we don't have that. My amendment says to construct, oh, yes, "For the purposes of construction a foster care."
For the purposes, and that's what...
We're gonna take a recess.
Thank you.